This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Good evening. I'd like to call the February 14th, 2019 meeting of the North Haven Board of Education to order at 6:30. This evening we are going to begin with a presentation by Jane Hyland, who I met in the elevator, from the Community Health Center on a program proposal. Welcome Jane.
Thank you.
Where are you more comfortable speaking?
Uh, I go there if that makes sense to everybody else.
So first, thank you very much, Sasan. Thank you very much for inviting me to share information about school-based health services. I had the opportunity to meet with some of your administrators and I think your members of your executive board. So, I work for the Community Health Center Incorporated. It's a federally qualified health center, a network of health centers. We have 15 health centers across the state of Connecticut, from as south as Stanford up through New London and everywhere in between. We do a lot of other things. We serve domestic violence populations. We serve in homeless shelters. And then we serve in schools. So I'm the director. We're in 180 schools in Connecticut with a variety of models. The model I want to talk to you folks about tonight is primarily behavioral health services. So we have licensed clinical social workers that come into schools, have identified space within a school, and they provide individual, group, and family therapy to students in need. All students are enrolled, so there's a consent form from the parent that allows us to see that child without the parent present. There's also a treatment plan, so the parent has to be involved in reviewing the treatment plan and signing off on the treatment plan. We also obviously always try to engage the families whenever we can. We all know, some are very engaged, some are not so engaged, but that's part of the clinician's work is to engage the parents. The children are seen during the school day. That's why it's called "school-based." And we work with the teachers and staff to try and not impact academics. However, a kid that needs therapy is probably gonna learn better if they have worked through some of their issues. All of our clinicians are licensed, so it's truly the children that need work outside of their IEPs or educational issues. Some kids are both, but most kids are not. They're seen for education with your staff and then they're seen for some of the clinical work with our staff. We are generally eight-hour day clinicians, so we have some flexibility to see parents before or after school depending on their work, their work schedules and availability. And I think we're talking about middle school and high school. And that's kind of it in a nutshell. And I would love to answer any of your questions.
I've got one. I don't want to ask Dana's opinion. From my understanding, you'll be working with students who may need this, someone to talk to more in a therapy-type session. What happens in the summer for continuity?
That's a great question. So we, all of our clinicians are on a contract. So it's considered 195 days. So it kind of mirrors a school contract, but there's those additional 15 days. At least three of those happen over the summer, but it could be more if the needs of their caseload demands that. Then there is the availability throughout the summer is often as much as is needed. Some kids need that continuity. Other kids, when the, you know, school session's out, some of the stresses are relieved and they're busy with camp and swimming and things that are, you know, distracting from maybe some of their issues. So we do continue to work through the summer.
What kinds of licenses?
Yep, we have a, we staffed with licensed professional counselors, licensed clinical social workers.
What level of social work license would that be?
It's as high as you can have. So, yeah. I know in New York they have some master-level licensed people. Our folks are mastered and then they've done all their supervision hours and then they receive, yep, then they receive the license.
And the test.
Yep, they're tested, yep. Credentialed and all of that.
So these clinicians are in addition to the clinicians we currently have in place?
Yes, so it's a different role. So the clinicians you have in place really focus on school issues?
Right.
And the clinicians that I would bring in would focus on things that are outside of the school issue. So home issues, traumas, those kinds of...
But they may work in tandem in a PPT setting?
They can be the invited. They can be the, our clinician can be the invited community-based provider that comes to a, yep, if they're invited by the parent. Yes.
So there's a line kind of between the two clinicians. You don't have equal access to both necessarily. In order for the school-based health clinician to attend, they would kind of be a guest, an invited guest. They wouldn't necessar, they're not supplying the IEP hours.
Okay.
That's our responsibility.
Okay.
And it remains our responsibility.
Yes. But they may work collaboratively?
Possibly if there's consent given and there's overlap of issues.
So there'd be different treatment goals? But there may be some strategies that they share to help, you know, a child to remain in a class focused for longer periods of time, things like that.
So can you give an idea or picture how this is gonna work? So you have your people in the school and if a student has any related issues, they come to a specific space to speak to someone?
So, yep, yes. There's a office space, just regular office space, where that would be identified as CHC's office space. Often the child is referred perhaps from school staff as someone who needs it. We get an enrollment form from the parent. And then we work looking at the child's schedule to determine what's the best time to first introduce ourselves to the the child's basically through a PaaS system or whatever you use now to have children move through the school. And then between the child and the clinician, they continue to schedule sessions. Again, the clinician has the child's schedule to make sure that they're not always missing English or always missing math. And they continue to work on treatment goals until treatment goals are met. And that's pretty much how it meets. Generally, there's about a minimum of six visits for our clinician a day. So they, they may be anywhere from 30 minutes long to 42 depending on your own schedules. And then parents are connected with whenever parents can get here, before, after. Sometimes children benefit from groups. So after perhaps being seen for a few sessions, there's a few kids that have similar issues that might benefit from a group session. So then they would try to coordinate a group session for those kids.
Are you, are you in any other districts?
Yeah, we're in 180 schools.
Okay.
So I'm trying to think of a district that we're in, like North Haven, but we're in every school in Meriden, we're in Waterbury, we're in every school in Middletown, we're in Clinton. We have school-based health centers in Branford, run by actually the Board of Ed, but same model. So I mean, we're in 180 schools, we're in a lot of districts.
Did I hear that you're in Madison and you're in...
We're not in Madison, but there was once a grant, I think, that funded a school-based health center in Madison.
So how does the communication work between your staff and the staff at the high school and parents? How would that actually all happen?
Okay. So that's a great question. And we want to have that communication with the school in particular. The parents are a separate entity, but with the school, most schools have some sort of support, student assistance team meetings or something like that. So our clinician would generally be invited to either the beginning or the end of that when conversations are happening about the kids that are on our caseload. And that's how there's some communication with the teammates from the school.
I'm just, I'm thinking about a student who's familiar with your office and has some kind of urgent need to speak to you. And so now you're in an emergency situation, whatever it might be. How does that message or does that message get to the parents, get to our school? So I'm not talking about like from a PPT or a regular, I'm talking about an in-the-moment situation.
While the child's in school?
Thank you.
The child's in school?
Yes.
In crisis? So if the child's enrolled with our, with our services and they're in crisis, then you can interrupt our clinician? And our clinician will work with that child who's in crisis, hopefully to eliminate 2-1-1.
So would the clinician let the school know right away that it's happening and then the parents as well?
The school would be involved in that as well, yes.
Okay, so even though you're a separate entity, you're still kind of communicating with them?
Yes, we wouldn't necessarily, as far as confidentiality, I mean, what's going on with the child is obviously protected with HIPAA. But there is a release on the enrollment form for HIPAA and FERPA to communicate at a high level. And then there's also just releases like you use anyway right now that parents can sign that then allow us to share more information as needed. And that's usually signed at every treatment plan, the release forms. But the enrollment form also gives us some general allowances around sharing information.
Have you ever run into issues with regard to other students and their, say, I don't know, targeting kids that are going to these therapy sessions?
No.
You know, because kids can be mean. And when a kid needs therapy, they generally can do so outside of school and others don't necessarily have to know about it. When you're doing it inside school, it becomes more visible and other people know what's going on or what your office is and what it does. I just wondered if there's any issues with regard to that.
So I have not heard of any issues. I mean, there may be. What I've heard is actually the opposite. Over time is that a lot of the stigma around therapy and behavioral health is eliminated. We have students referring students where they think their friend would benefit from services. It may not happen right away, but that's generally the way, over time, that's what's happened. It becomes a safe, another safe area for students to share and confide and...
Jane, does, do you prioritize students in terms of who's seen or not seen? In terms of students who may be able to have counseling outside of school with the family? And those, those that may not be able to do that, have the resources for that? Or is it sort of equally distributed?
That's a good question. So as a federally qualified health center, our mission as in the health center is to serve underinsured and uninsured and folks. In school-based, it's also about an access point. So there's great community-based providers, but what we find is that there's a huge no-show rate for students. So parents have to leave work to get their child there. Child has to leave school or miss out on after-school activities to get there. When it happens in school, there's a continuity that, you know, we have pretty much a zero no-show rate. You know, so if the kid's in school, they're gonna get seen. Great.
Thank you.
Any, also, any other questions?
Talk a little bit about students that are 18 birthday.
Yeah, we still, we get for a high school setting, we have a license, we get licensed by the Department of Children and Families for the students under the 18, under the age of 18. But we also get Department of Public Health, which then allows us to continue to see kids right through till they graduate.
Do you still need parents' consent?
No.
Yeah, because they're...
No, I'm sorry, that was your question, no. A child over 18 can refer themselves.
And can I just, like, how is this funded?
I was gonna say, do you want to know about the money? So there is school-based health services and centers. Now, a school-based health center is, has a medical component. Okay, so behavioral health like this is is really considered extended school services or I call it "school-based services." So there are, I have maybe 15 school-based health centers that have funding from the Department of Public Health. I have another 20 school-based health centers with medical that don't have any funding. And we sustain ourselves on commercial and Medicaid billing revenue. So, and we have 50 behavioral health only that are self-sustaining on commercial and Medicaid billing.
I think I asked this before when you were talking to the smaller committee.
Sure.
My memory isn't what it is. So let's say that a student needs more or your people are not necessarily equipped to or specializing in whatever it is that the student might be exhibiting. Are there clear and easy mechanisms for moving ahead with something like that? Referring a student to other places if necessary?
So this would be our first step into North Haven, but I'm sure you guys know some of the resources that are available. So yeah, we would work, we would get to know those resources really well. But yeah, there's definitely the students that come to us that are beyond our scope and we would work to refer them to higher levels of care. I don't know what population or interest they would be with Community Health Center. I think the closest is probably Meriden. But certainly resource-rich. Our health centers are resource-rich. And so we have psychiatry and even, our clinicians can even use them as their own resource to help, you know, if there's a, we have something called Project Echo which allows our clinicians to sit with other, like a faculty of experts to bring difficult cases to help them work through. It's all unidentified and, you know, it's just a case without names and stuff. So oftentimes, difficult cases that may or may not need higher-level care might first go there for some assistance before we then suggest that the child moves to higher-level care. But it happens and we will use the resources that are available.
There will be, excuse me, one in the middle school and one in the high school? Or it will just be one located in both?
I think we would initially begin with one shared between the two. But we do, part of the contract is that we will increase our capacity if the demand is increased. So if all of a sudden the middle school, we had more than we knew what to do with, then we would recruit to expand.
Do you know where it will be located at this time? If it's approved, would it be in the high school or do we know that?
We would have a location in both buildings because you obviously would need a confidential space to have these conversations.
Right, there would be spaces. I'm sorry, yeah, there would be spaces in both buildings.
What would the staffing be like? How many people would be working in the school?
So initially, I would think there'd be one clinician that would go to both schools and we would build the practice that way. So they'd split the 20 hours in 20 hours.
Is there potential to add the dental or the health at some point?
I think if, if there's an identified need for the, for the community, then probably.
So what about long-term? This proposal says 1920. Are you looking at it long-term or just as an experiment and then see how it goes?
No, no, it's, we've, I've never closed a...
So the commitment is long-term?
The commitment is long-term. I think the contract should be evergreen. It doesn't have an end date.
Okay, I'm just, okay, that's the beginning.
That's the proposal.
Proposal of 19.
Right, you guys don't have the actual contract yet.
Okay.
So we generally have a contract that's evergreen that has a clause that says with six months or three months notice, then, you know, we could obviously end the contract, but there is typically no end date.
Okay, and the funding stream is solid?
It's based on revenue.
Oh, revenue. And that's revenue from?
Billing commercial and Medicaid.
Okay.
So there's no out-of-pocket fees for families? So there's no co-pays? Those get waived because it's school-based. And so we just accept whatever the insurance company pays.
Okay, I just want one more question for a lot of people. Oh, sure, go ahead. And you have an eighth grader that maybe you pick up mid-year and come June, it's still obvious that he's, you know, this student's gonna need assistance. Now he's changing to the high school. Would the person who's providing the services move, have access to her next year, five years?
No, the clinician in the middle school would work to transition with the high school clinician. Now, we do have a couple of locations where we do exactly that. We have a clinician in sixth grade and then that clinician also works part-time in the middle school. And I mean, if that, if that was something that North Haven felt we needed to do, I mean, that's the only location I know that we do it.
Okay, any more questions? We have some good questions. Thank you to the CNI committee for also discussing this at length and bringing it to us. So may I have a motion to approve the adoption of the Community Health Center at the North Haven Middle School and the North Haven High School?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Any further discussion?
Dana, are you the point person that's representing the district on this?
Yes, and as the services come into play, Lisa Tia Dossio, the coordinator for pupil personnel, she may be the more reliable point person once all the logistics...
Reliable point person?
Well, because she is a school psychologist.
That is reliable.
Well, I'm reliable in some things. She's more reliable in others, to be honest with you.
Okay.
And so, you know, I guess it depends on what the questions would be coming forward, you know?
But like dealing with...
For now, it's May.
The provider, okay.
Yes, yes.
How will we get this information out to everybody? Is this at the beginning?
So that's our job with your help, but we have, generally we piggyback on back-to-school packets and we put our information there. We want to put a link on the website. We want to, we might do a press release. So we have a lot, whole bag of tricks.
What happens if, I mean, you seem lovely. I'm sure this won't be the case, but what happens if we want to sever ties? In the contract, it's 90 days, six months, you said?
I can't recall. There's a couple of different clauses with some timing in it, but there's definitely an out phase in there, yeah.
And I would assume that if, you know, students are talking to clinicians, we're not gonna come up and say, "Okay, you're done today."
Right, right. Oh, no. Is that meant?
No, I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the students and the families of North Haven. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Welcome. I did bring just some pamphlets and packets. I'll leave them.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, consent agenda.
Thank you very much.
Did everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes on December 13? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Board of Ed's student representative, Zoe? How are you?
I'm good, how are you? Welcome. So for classes 2020, my class, we just started putting in a lot of fundraisers and that are focusing sort of towards senior year and, you know, pushing us on. And you've scheduled, you've already scheduled a car wash fundraiser in May. We've had an idea called "Flocking," which is, you know, in motion. We're still talking about it.
Please, no, no pink flamingo.
I'll give you Mrs. Anderson's address.
The mixed bag fundraiser is coming up. That starts March 1st through the 29th.
What is that?
It's, so it's sort of like a catalog where you get a mixed bags of like different goods that you can order, whether it's baked goods or different goods. It's usually very popular, just definitely around like Mother's Day and it's very a good fundraiser. We usually get a lot of money out of that, so we're counting on that. The underclassmen, the freshmen just finished their Valentine's Day fundraising. And my class in general, we're focused on, you know, making our schedules and a lot of students have already committed to some colleges like UConn and Kuyt Pack for sports and things like that. And for Tim, who could make it tonight, the seniors are on their last stretch of high school and are focusing on their regular decisions, waiting for colleges. They have also a lot of athletes going to play in college in Providence and look for some for lacrosse at Vassar. The class had a bake sale last week during course selection night. There is a badminton tournament and basketball game coming soon as a fundraiser and probably a teacher versus student game that's still in the works, that President Jovan says. And the seniors, you know, completing their promos and things like that. And we were making also with Dalla, I know you two were in the meeting, but in the, we're making a school-wide sort of video and movement to promote like diversity in the school. And like all students are being involved in this and that and we're making posters, we're making videos and we're just doing a lot to, you know, create our positive school environment, so.
So you know, as that, as that group does more work, I was really impressed with what you were doing that day when we sat in. Would you be able to sort of look at it systemically? So I know you're focusing on the high school, but I think some of the stuff that you're doing, really, we can begin very early on. And so it might be nice, for example, we've started a diversity club at one of the elementary schools.
Yes.
It would be nice to connect the clubs, you know?
Yes, that would be great. I, definitely because we've like made it a bigger, broader, like diversity. I'm the president of the smaller diversity club like in the school and we've talked about maybe being able to go to the middle school or like younger schools and like, because we do presentations, student per student
Be wonderful.
To student presentations.
Yep.
And like kind of spreading that positivity and positive messages in the lower grades, so then they move up, you know, they join diversity.
That's right.
You know, it keeps going on.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. My report is brief tonight. Thank you all for coming out on Valentine's Day. And I just also just like people to know the board is making a donation in Dr. Cronin's name to all of our schools from some libraries to each school in your honor, Dr. Cronin. So thank you, as well as to the North Haven Public Library. We're going to make some career books on teaching as a career in the Career Center at the Public Library. We'd like to say that and say thank you. And I understand tickets for the play, I don't know if you'll bring that up in here?
I wasn't supposed to.
I will. Are on sale now and I recommend we go see them. And so that's it. Any unfinished business that anyone wanted to bring up today? Any new business? Okay. Reports with standing committee? ACES?
Yes. Actually, I was late for the meeting. So the Leader Hill building is on time. But as you know, with moving into a new building in August, they're very concerned. So that they have adopted the ACES challenges to start mid-week, which make me very happy. But it actually will start after Labor Day because they have to move the buildings that are on Skiff Street down to Leader Hill. So hopefully that will take place on time. And then we had the second reading of the seclusion and restraint policy to make sure that is in line and that Tom O'Ne's office is guiding everybody. So we kind of went through that, it was a fun tooth comb. That's it?
Curriculum instruction and planning?
So Dr. Dalla met with us to discuss a proposal to hire an additional security guard. We currently have only one and he's necessarily stationed in the front entrance. So an additional guard would be able to patrol the school grounds, particularly important during the afternoons and evenings when the sporting events take place and the clubs take place and of course, adult education. The salary would come from money already budgeted for a computer specialist. This was a clerical position that dealt with attendance. Those responsibilities are now allocated to six other staff members and it's a sustainable model which is working out well. And therefore, it's not necessary to hire a new person for that position. So this position would actually save money because that, the security guard position is designated as category three as opposed to the computer specialist which was designated category five. So CNI recommends approval for that. Steve Blumenthal presented a proposal to hire an assistant outdoor track and field coach. The rationale for the new position includes concern regarding the fact that because many events occur simultaneously, both inside and outside, it's challenging for a single coach to supervise them all appropriately. And we also recommended that for approval. Then there was a new club proposal that we passed, the Heart and Soul Club for the middle school. I didn't ask why soul is spelled S-O-L-E, but there you have it. CNI recommends approval for this club. The goal is to improve the social, emotional, and physical well-being of girls in grades six to eight. It's a nationwide program that utilizes research-based curricula.
I just have a question on the security guard. So would this security guard position be basically for nighttime? Because I'm...
I think that was at right afternoon.
With the afternoon. Right.
With the SRO officer at the school and then the, and then the security guards. But you think it's mostly for night and then those sporting?
As I understood, it was afternoon.
Like when there's sports happening and stuff like that?
And then even later on because of adult activity.
Right, right.
Only of people coming into the building.
For which there's no screening and anybody can come in.
No, I mean, and I know that's been a question a lot of people have asked, you know, this, because the one who's up at front can't see where people are. Okay, are we doing finance and operations?
Finance and operation, do not need. We're just coming off the presentation earlier this month. We were on a holding pattern, waiting for the town to get back to us. Our new business manager will be starting next month.
We've all had the, I just thought I was out there. We've all had the board event. We'll have an opportunity to meet with her and talk with her and we're excited. She came to the presentation that we gave to the Board of Finance. Middle school committee?
Building committee.
Excuse me, let me push my glasses off.
So there was a special meeting, um, held, I wasn't able to make it. The focus of the meeting was to basically approve the specs for the new gym floor, which was approved. Um, they had to meet in order to get it out to bid on time, so that they could, uh, if everything goes through, they could change it and be on schedule through the summer. So they adopted that, uh, the specs, and, um, next meeting is March fourth.
So then, I, I know we talked about this, I believe it was last month or the month before, we talked about the problem with the gym floor. So the gym floor is being done before any other monies are spent, anything that's spent. We're completing the middle school first, before monies are spent to do things outside, like the track and
Yes, before, yeah, so there's that, there's a list of things that are kind of like holding out there to see what's going to be left at the end of the day. But the, uh, the floors are being looked at as part of the, uh, entire project that should be taken care of initially.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for that middle school building committee report.
This question about the, uh, the floors, um, are the floors, the specs that were approved, they're within the current budgeted allotment for the middle school building committee?
So, um, the floors initially, let me, uh, just add some context to it. Initially, the plan was not to replace the floor, because the, um, the consultant or the contractor who had looked at it said, you didn't need to replace it, that you just need to, you know, clean it up, resurface and everything. But at the end of the day, we found out that we needed to replace it, you know? So there was, um, nothing like set aside, so to speak, initially, that you had to replace the gym floor. You know, so it's, um, it's something that's new, so to speak. Cause that was not the original plan. The original plan based on what the contractor said was to resurface the floor, which is what we did. But it ended up that it needs to be replaced.
That's, that's, yep, got it. Um, but the money for it is coming from the form, like what's remaining in the project? We're not going back to the town for additional
No, 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 it's part of the project, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
And then whatever's money left, then they'll go on that checklist to figure out
Yes, to figure out exactly what's priority and, um, what needs to be taken care of.
Is there a lot?
If there's anything left.
Is there a lot left on the middle floors?
So last, last time, if I remember correctly, last time that, um, it was reported, I think it was close to half a million. Last time it was, it was just last year, late last year.
We have five million dollars left?
No.
Five million, five hundred thousand.
Sorry. Five million.
Don't get excited, half a million. Yeah, and the, the number that was being estimated for the floor was something over three hundred thousand. But we don't know yet until the bids come back, and then we can take a look and see what the actual cost will be.
Last time we checked in on this, there were like a lot of contracts that were being kind of finalized, and people were talking through, um, to make sure that everything was delivered appropriately. And I think that, uh, Mr. Genofrio, the lawyer, was looking to see if we're going to be able to recoup any money from anybody, um, to see if we could grow that half a million. I don't want to put words in his mouth, I'm not saying, I'm definitely not saying it right, um, what he's doing. But, um, I guess the, the remaining funds were still in flux, because a lot of the contracts hadn't been paid yet. Is that still the case?
Yeah, so there were some, uh, monies that were being returned back, because, you know, when you set aside, allocate X amount of money, and at the end of the project, they don't use it, they will think
Right.
They return some back to you. And also, uh, there's, you're talking about errors and omissions.
Yep.
So they're still going through the process. I know they had executive session after the, the special meeting, uh, to discuss the E and O, to see what the status is, you know, so that's something that's still in play. I know they had, uh, looked at a consultant to sort of review the list of errors and mission that were submitted to see what was viable and what was not viable. So that's something that's still in play.
Okay.
So we don't know how much we'll get back, you know, cause it's a tricky, from what I understand, it's a tricky, uh, you know, what do you call it, uh, process?
Yeah. Okay.
Because you're saying that this person is responsible for this, they're coming back and saying, no, we're not responsible for it. You know, responsible for only one or two, rather than the ten things that you presented to them. So it's still something that's still in play.
Okay, thanks.
Goldie, is, is the intention that the floor will be completed when students return in August?
Yes, so the idea is to do it over the summer. That's why they needed to host a special meeting and get the bid, bids out.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for that building committee report.
In this middle school.
North Haven Education.
How many days of law?
Valentine's Day.
Ball home. The education foundation report.
Due to the storm earlier this week, it got postponed to next Wednesday.
What is the date, do you know of, handle the date is of the spelling day?
Uh, it's April, I can tell you. I think it's the twenty fifth, but I'm not sure.
That sounds right, that sounds like you said it before.
Yeah, I think it's the twenty fifth, yeah.
Just the last Thursday of the month?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so the board needs to determine whether we're going to put together a, uh, beehive this year. And, um,
A swarm.
A swarm. And who's going to be in it.
Not it, I did it last year.
We're sponsoring a team.
We are.
Everybody has.
Patrick hasn't done it yet, has he?
Oh, yeah.
Well, does he have to be the emcee?
Oh, Patrick has to be the
That's right.
He has to wear the wig off, no? No, no, I've clearly tried to make it optional, trust me, it's not.
Hey, Dr. Cronin, did you tell him that the bird, the ptarmigan, starts with P, the silent P?
Yeah. That's right.
Well, I'll tell you what, offline, we can talk about, um, getting some, a little, a team together, including our students, they're welcome to be on our team, we usually need you for our spelling.
I actually, I think, um, I think that they've talked about bringing it down so that students can be more actively involved, is that accurate?
It was something that was discussed, yeah.
Okay, I'll come back. Yeah.
You could come back as a spelling.
Yeah, no, you wouldn't want that, that does not help the team.
So Joe, let us know after your meeting next week?
Yep.
And, um, then we can start working that out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Policy, do you want to talk about that at all, Patrick?
Uh, just that, um, I know that it is time to begin reviewing policies. And, um, and, you know, my, my advice to the board is that we do it in some sort of a systemic, systematic fashion, because, um, you don't want it to get ahead of you. Mrs. Caldwell, correct? And, uh, and so, um, and that you take a, a series and that you work through those, um, in, in, you know,
Okay.
at a time.
Working with Jessica?
Jessica Ritter, yeah.
Of those, so, um, we'll get together on what probably are the newest changes and, and those. Okay, great. Randy, anything on your athletic committee?
I do not have anything on the athletic committee.
Okay, just wait another month, but it's spring. PTA Council, I missed you.
It's okay. Um, so we met, uh, January sixth. We have a legislative breakfast coming up on February twenty seventh. Um, there is an update on project graduation, there's a lot of fundraising that's happening right now for that. Um, there's a DJ and karaoke planned currently. Uh, there was a food truck rumble that took place too, and that was supposed to be very fun. I thought that was a neat idea. And the Best Buddies Ball had over a hundred participants, which was really great to hear.
Wow.
Yeah. Um, there was discussion actually about the middle school looking to partner with the, um, diversity club at the high school to kind of expand a little bit. So I imagine that someone from the middle school will be reaching out to you guys shortly. Um, cause you have a great reputation for, for doing great things. Um, and there was also lots of discussion around vaping and the dangers of vaping and how to kind of get a message through to kids. And I guess Yale School of Medicine came and gave a presentation on that, which I think is great, too.
Yes, it was very well done.
Well, that's great. Um, and then, you know, Clintonville continues to offer the after-school enrichment programs that are doing really well. Kids are learning to play the ukulele, create video games, uh, doing arts and crafts, and doing all kinds of various activities from STEM to, uh, to arts and, and, um, English, more language arts type things. And Monowice recently collected seven hundred items for their sock and book drive. Um, there's also going to be another event at Anthony's Ocean View this year for the Monowice PTAs. Well, I'll keep you updated on that as I learn more.
Isn't that happening like soon, like this weekend or next weekend?
Next weekend?
Oh, is it?
I haven't gotten the email yet, so. If I get anything on it, I'll send it out to everybody. Uh, but our next meeting is March sixth.
May I have a motion to approve the standing committee reports?
Some of them.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Before we go on to staff communications, might I just ask the board, um, Tim, did you have anything you wanted to say? We, we already went over, I, I know Zoe said a few things on behalf of you, but, um, I didn't know if there was anything you wanted to bring up? Like how wonderful midterms were or anything like that?
Um, yeah, midterms are wonderful. And, um, I guess I just want to say the, um, seniors are on their last stretch of high school.
Yes.
Great, and, um, I might be putting you on the spot. You don't have to tell us, have you got any ideas yet, where you want to go?
Um, I don't know yet, but I will have an answer in May.
In May?
Boy, they would make you wait, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's stressful.
Good for you. Um, we hope you stay local and come back and visit us.
Thank you.
Dr. Cronin, staff communications?
Yep, just a, a couple of things. The, um, I'm, I'm going to pass out to you a draft of the sort of mid-year report. Um, and there are still other things that I'd like to add to it, which is why it's in draft form. But, um, it's, uh, looking at our five goals that we establish, uh, one in teaching and learning, one in leadership, one in communication, one in culture, and then one focusing on the lowest-performing twenty-five percent of our students. And you'll see that it just sort of spells out for you what we've been working on. The couple of things that I'd just like to emphasize is that, um, we've taken a huge step this year in introducing the new standards-based elementary report card, which was a, a significant transition. Um, and, uh, we piloted it in schools last year, this year it was full-fledged. And, um, kudos to teachers, because it's, um, it was an adjustment. Um, we have, um, a lot, you've heard me talk a lot about, and Melinda talked a lot about the work in writing that we're doing at the elementary school, that's now filtering into the middle school, um, both in terms of a reading workshop and a writing workshop model. And, um, we've been doing a lot of work around the science standards, um, K through twelve, certainly at the middle and high. But as we can in the elementary, we do as well. So that is, um, that's just for your information. So, one final thing. Actually, it was eight years ago, at the February Board of Education meeting, that, um, I was appointed superintendent of North Haven. And, um, I feel like we've come full circle for this to be my last board meeting. But I didn't want the time to go by, and the opportunity to go by, to express, um, my gratitude for this opportunity. This has been a wonderful, wonderful experience. I can't speak about the countless acts of kindness that have been extended to me over the years. Um, the ongoing support of the Board of Education has been remarkable. Every board that I've worked with, um, I could not have asked for more. And as a superintendent, that is your, um, that is your greatest sense of support. And you have done that all of the time, and, um, I, I'm very grateful to you for that. I also think that, um, boards of education in this business, in our work, boards of educations are the unsung heroes. And because of the amount of time and commitment it takes to do the job effectively. And I just wanted to express my deepest appreciation to you for that and for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's Well, I just, actually, I wanted to just pass this along. Um, this is, the Office of Civil Rights has, um, uh, produced a new, um, policy on non-discrimination, that it's really not an option. Um, but I, I pass it out to you to look at this, and then, you know, you can bring it up for conversation if you, if you wish in the future, but it really sort of
I think it's just going to go into the right summer, right? Into the right section. Jenny, do you know what section that is?
Not a hundred.
Come on, Jenny.
In the past, you would be able to tell me. Three, two, F, at the point one. Okay, Melinda?
Um, I just wanted to remind the board that tomorrow is a professional development day for, um, faculty, for staff. And it's a self-directed professional development. We've been having one a year, which kind of aligns with state statute, where teachers get to select their area of learning for the day. So they propose, um, to their evaluator, how they'd like to spend the day working on, um, various activities, visiting other schools, going to a workshop. And then, um, they reflect on that at the end of the day, um, through a, a Google Drive, and their evaluator can look at, um, how their day went for them. So people are typically very excited for this professional development.
They do some great stuff.
They do some really wonderful stuff.
Do you have a list of the things that they're doing?
Um, each evaluator kind of gets their own persons and approves it. Um, some of it's curriculum writing, the teachers may come together, um, where we're doing some of the teachers' college reading and writing. Um, grade-level teams often get together and kind of work out the next unit that's before them and do some planning around that. Um, it's a whole host of things. It's really great. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
And our CNI won't meet in March, we've talked about that beforehand. April will be our next meeting.
No questions?
No.
Um, we're going to skip over the director of finance and operations, and we'll move on to public comments. Any public comments tonight?
So, uh, I attended the, uh, workshop presentation of the, uh, Board of Education. I'd just like to commend everyone, did a great job on, on putting together the budget this year. I really enjoyed the presentation, I thought it was very, very well done. Um, I just had a couple of quick questions, um, about the actual budget that was presented and, and the crib sheet that was handed out, which I also appreciated. Um, so I noticed that there was an extra twenty thousand dollars for the maintenance of the turf fields. So I was just wondering if you give some sort of insight as to what that, for extra groundskeeping of the middle school, as well as specifically the turf fields? So what
Yeah, I think that really what that is, um, is, uh, in addition to the maintenance of the turf fields, it's because of the increased size of the middle school that we contract for part of the custodial services. And so we've had to increase personnel, um, with the new building. And I think that some of those monies are used for that.
So it's the, the exterior of the middle school?
No, interior. Much of it is for the interior.
So grounds covers both interior and exterior?
Yes.
But then very specifically regarding the turf fields, what, what is it?
Yeah, I, I think that, um, Mr. Diana included that just to make certain that we maintain them in, in, in as good a condition as we possibly can. And, um, if that isn't necessary, and if that money isn't needed, then it would be, um, you know, re-appropriated or
But that's done by our existing staff?
Yes, it is.
Not contracted?
No.
So it really shouldn't be additional costs?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and, uh, another thing that I noticed, uh, on the, the page where you list all the, the leadership salaries. So first of all, thank you for switching the format of that from a paragraph to a table format. It's, it's really very, uh, very nice to be able to see the table. Um, but I did notice, um, that there were a couple of, um, positions, assistant principal salaries, that appeared to have gone down. Is there some other source of income for them? Or, I mean, I can't imagine contractually that that makes sense.
Yes, no, what happened was, um, in one of the, pat, most recent negotiations, we added steps to the administrator's contract in terms of salary.
Right.
Some of the new administrators that came, have come in, are at the lower salary and working their way up, as opposed to coming in at a higher level.
Yeah, I don't mean relative to the other positions with the same title, I mean relative to last year. So in theory, it should be the exact same people. I think there was only one person that was hired, right, as the, one of the assistant principals. And all the others should be exactly the same. But I just noticed comparing the actual numbers from seventeen, eighteen, to the budgeted numbers, and I can show you, you know, later on, but it just seems strange to me. So I wondered if it was either an error, or there's some other source of income that just isn't reflected in that table. just isn't reflected in that table.
I can, I can try to get that answered.
Sure. Sure. I just wanted to call it to your attention. Okay.
And Nancy, I don't believe there's any other source of income.
Okay.
At all.
Okay.
So we'll look at what that is.
Sure, of course.
It may have been something with the steps.
Okay. And then aside from the budget, since we've hired these intervention teachers and we've had now some time to have them really getting into the school systems and really working with a lot of students, I've heard very positive things. I'm just wondering, have you done any objective evaluations to really be able to quantify their impact within each of the schools?
We have.
Okay.
We have looked at the student passing rate. We have looked at graduation on time rates. And we have looked at students that we have been able to, the number of students we've been able to work through the program and then allow, then they're able to continue on their own without the support.
Right.
So we have that information.
Okay.
So far, yeah.
So the bar is really kind of at a, kind of gross level of graduation rates and passing rates as opposed to, you know, this student was wrestling with, you know, anxiety and wasn't able to do testing outside the, or in the classroom and now can, you know, that kind of.
Oh, yeah. The.
Radiation.
The interventionists would have all of that information.
Right, right.
They maintain that.
So we haven't been able to kind of objectively measure that, you know, kind of across the board?
No.
Down to the drill-down level?
I don't think.
Okay, okay. And then one last thing. At the budget workshop presentation, you didn't include the enrollment figures by school. And I was just wondering if you happen to have those? Because according to the annual report, and that could be completely inaccurate, both the town population and the school enrollment seems to be declining each year. So I'm just wondering if that is accurate?
I believe that that is accurate.
Okay.
And we did send over the enrollment report since the, since the presentation.
Okay.
And so we will.
Great.
Have copies of that available.
Great. And do you happen to know, kind of offhand, what the enrollment figures are, or do you have them?
I just know that there is a slight decline.
Right.
I don't know the exact numbers.
Exact numbers.
Because I know you have that. If you wouldn't mind.
I can get those later.
Okay.
But thank you so much.
Okay.
That's all for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other public comments? Sally?
Chairman Anderson, Sally Blamey, Find Blossom Drive. Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. I decided, I felt compelled to come here tonight after I read the New Haven Register article about, it appeared February 4th, about the replacement of the middle school gym. And I know you all talked about it before, but after I read that article, I felt I wanted to talk to you. And in that article, it said that there was about 400,000 left in the middle school budget. That was, you know, Mr. Johns, the chairman of the middle school building committee, had given that figure in the article. I believe Mr. Adell had quoted 500,000, but thought that was from.
It was close to.
December. So maybe after some bills or whatnot. But I understand that it could fluctuate a bit with errors and omissions and whatnot, but it seems to be more in the $400,000 range. And it's my understanding, Mr. Adell, you could correct me if I'm wrong, the original edspec, which of course control, which is of course the guiding post, if you will, for the middle school building project, called for that floor to be replaced in the original edspecs. But when it came time to work on the floor, I guess the decision was to just refinish as a cost-saving mechanism. And so the problem, as I understand it from reading the article, was that because the air conditioning system had changed in the gym and the air quality had changed, it created some spaces in between the boards. Is that, was your understanding of the problem?
So if I remember correctly, when it came down to the gym floors and things like that, we had someone take a look at it, you know? And so if you could get, if you could refinish the floor and do whatever you need to do to bring it up to par without replacing it, that's the direction that we went. But then, like you mentioned, things, the circumstances changed.
Because of the air quality.
Yeah, call for replacing the floor, right, and leaving it as it was when it was refinished. So it's like any construction project or any renovation project, when you get to certain portions of the project, if you can do what you need to do to bring it up to where it needs to be without replacement, you can refinish, do whatever you need to do.
Right. No, no, no.
That's the direction. Exactly. But unfortunately, at the end of the day, we found out that, you know, it actually needs to be replaced.
Did any, did either Gilbain or the owners rep from Cal U warn the middle school building committee, you know, based on the floor's age, which was about 60 years old, I think, or 50 to 60 years old? Did anyone warn the middle school building committee of the impact that the change in the air quality because of the air conditioning might have on the floorboards?
I don't know. I don't, because that discussion took place a long time ago.
Okay.
So I don't even recall the nature of that discussion. But decisions like that, discussions like that were done in a group. So people would chip in. So for example, the architect would chip in in the conversation, Gilbain. Also, the owners rep Chuck would, you know, would provide his own guidance and everything. So it's usually a breadth of discussion when we're talking about things like that.
Okay. Well, Chairman Anderson, did you read the article that was in the paper?
I have to say, I did not.
Okay.
But a lot of other things happened last Friday.
Yes, okay. Well, here's what concerned me, and again compelled me to come to talk to you about it. Because in the article, with the reference of just 400,000 left and maybe 300,000 needed to now replace the floor, which was the original plan, but didn't work out. And the fact that in the article, Chairman Johns said that the floor was playable, usable, I think was the word that he used in the article. But they wanted to give it that like-new look, and so they decided to replace it. My question to you is, did anyone consult with you or this board about a preference of using the last available funds to do the gym floor versus the track?
No.
Okay. Do you have any opinion on which, because to me, and here's where it bothered me, because what happened first, before that February 4th article appeared? In January, at the January Board of Finance meeting, the director of Public Works, Lynn Sedowski, was giving her Public Works budgetary presentation for the workshop. And she included in that presentation a request to do, to resurface the track. And that caught me a little off guard, that that request would come in on the town side of the budget in Public Works. And I thought, hmm, well, there goes, I guess there's not enough money for the middle school building committee to do it, so that must be why she's requesting it. So, you know, I thought, okay, let's see what happens. And then the article appears February 4th, a couple of weeks later, that there's this 400,000 left, that the floor is usable, but because they want to make it look like new, they're going to use pretty much most of that last bit of money to redo this gym floor. So we have a usable, oh, one more thing. This is very important. When she gave her presentation, she presented a report of all the problems with the track and that it was, you know, a lot of the surface had worn away, that there were cracks in it, that it was uneven in certain areas because perhaps roots are coming up. To me, it sounds like a very dangerous track when we have middle school and high school kids running their hearts out around this track that's uneven with cracks. So I hear Mr. Johns referred to the gym floor as usable, but we're going to replace it. And then I look at a track that I think is maybe a little bit more dangerous. And that's why I wondered if you were consulted on how to spend it. What your thoughts are on that?
I have a question. I thought that the money that we received for the middle school building project was not to be used for the track because the track is technically the high school's?
No.
Is that correct?
No, the middle school, the track was included in the middle school project. It was budgeted at about 357,000, and that was included in the original 68, 69.8 million dollar budget. And the reason why it was included was because the middle school uses the track for gym, even though it's technically off-site.
Right.
It was included in the project, but it was very soon, very early on, it was put on the altered bid.
They've been contacted by parents about the gym floor. Their kids are in the basketball league, and it's very, very, they're having a hard time.
Oh, yeah. Well, see, I haven't been there, but I was just going by what I read in the paper, which was, it's usable, was the word.
The paper actually says that it's still usable.
Still usable.
Which in my mind could suggest that it's not always going to remain so. I mean, I don't know.
Well, everything wears out over time. Yeah. I'm still usable.
I think so.
I don't know how long.
No, it's like the Boston Garden over there.
To go back, you know.
I just, I just wanted to know.
We were not, the board was not asked for their opinion. As you well know, the middle school committee is responsible for, once we voted on it and voted on the specs, they go through it. But my understanding from what I heard, and this is going back several months ago, was that the floor was buckling.
Yes.
Was buckling.
Separating.
And separating. I could be wrong about the buckling, but, you know, in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, you're getting really hot, you're getting really cold, maybe you're getting some humidity underneath the floor, and it might be coming up. And the reason then, after that, that it was decided that it was a safety issue and the floor needed to be replaced.
I'm not questioning that it needed to replace. I was questioning prioritizing, that's all. I think they both need to be replaced, clearly. And I just wondered about that priority, that's all. Mainly because of the word usable that was in the article, and mainly because of how Public Works Director Sedowski described the track at her presentation to the Board of Finance in January, which was pretty deplorable. So, you know, I'm looking at, you know, I was there for that presentation and heard what she said about the track. I've actually been to the track and I've seen some of the defects personally. I've not been to the gym.
Yeah.
I was relying on the article for that.
I will agree with you that the track needs to be replaced.
Right, right.
You know, hand down, that track needs to be replaced.
No, I agree.
And we can talk about it. The redness coming up, you talk about the roots coming through.
Yes, they're causing some uneven surfacing. And again, I, I'm not here to say, don't do the gym floor. I was just wondering about prioritizing.
What I'd like to do is perhaps we can talk or go to the next middle school building committee meeting.
I think that's what I'm going to have to do, yes.
And look at that, and then look at their priority, once the school is completed, once all the interior of the school is completed, what is next? What's next on their bucket list?
Yeah.
Is the next big priority the track, which we hope it will be? And what kind of funds will we have to do that and the other? But those did not come to us.
Right, well, if there is, if, I don't think there's enough to do both the gym floor and the track. But, you know, it's like Mr. Adell had said, you know, maybe there'll be more money coming in, you know? And I do understand, certainly in a project at the scope of the middle school, there's going to be unforeseen circumstances and change orders happen regularly. There's a lot to be proud of for our new middle school. Don't get me wrong. I'm simply just talking about, based on what I heard in January at the Board of Finance meeting about the track and what I read in the paper from Mr. Johns's perspective about the gym floor, you know, whether it was a prioritizing issue or not because of restricted funds, and I just wanted to have the opportunity to talk to you about it.
Yeah, no problem. And as you know, Sally, you can also call me anytime, too.
Yes, but.
Right. You know, if you were able to.
I thought I'd come here.
Okay.
So, you know, I have a lot of, you know, have you considered whether the track will be safe for track meets this spring? And, you know, how does that work? Does the CIAC examine facilities to determine their appropriateness?
I would have to talk to our athletic director, Mr. Blumenthal, Steve Blumenthal.
Okay.
But I don't believe Steve would allow anything to be played or used that was not safe for our students.
So there is some sort of, and again, I'm just basing it on the pretty deplorable condition that Public Works Director Lynn Sedowski spelled out for us. I'm thinking, gee, should these kids be running around on this thing in a couple of months? You know? So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And I want to say.
I will ask Steve.
I appreciate that there is a no trespassing sign now at the turf fields. It's not that big, but it's there. And I anxiously await the big sign that will talk about restricting use of the turf field without, you know, the necessity of, you know, prior arrangement and permission to use it. So I guess the big sign, similar to the Vanacore Field sign, is coming later, but at least there's a no trespassing sign. So that's a step in the right direction. Madam Chair, and thank you for arranging that. That's it.
Jenny? Okay. Thank you. And now may I have a motion, oh, do we have any future agenda items we want to bring up?
Well, I'd like to bring up next time about Phil Diana was going to be giving a report about air conditioning among the few schools at the end of January.
Sure. Put that on there?
I know he's gotten.
Well, and good thing is, we don't have any school dates. We're out of school January, excuse me, June what?
Well, we had one this week. Our first one was this week, so I think.
12?
It's early.
Like, we'll be until June 12th and 13th. You must know, Tim.
Which will buy some time.
Sure.
Yeah.
It doesn't alleviate, to me, September has been worse than the end of the school year.
For peace, we'll make that in for part of our agenda for next week, next month, rather. Any other items? Okay, then may I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss matters of personnel and contract negotiation? And may I have a motion to invite Patrick Sturke into this meeting? So moved. Second. Any discussion? Okay, great, thank you. All in favor?